And Mr. Mayor, we're live.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for May 4th, 2020, and call upon Mayor Protem Dot Miller.
Thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now if you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Kristen Rush, if you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Hey, all present and accounted for. Thank you all. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of the April 20th and April 30th City Council meetings. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they will stand as presented. Next, it's my distinct honor to do a proclamation. This has been an interesting time for so, so many people. And as we all know, May is traditionally the month when high school graduations occur across the nation in Colorado and in Arvada. The unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic resulted in the Jefferson County Public School District converting to a online learning environment in March of 2020 and postponing graduation ceremonies until August of 2020. The 2020 graduates of Arvada, Arvada West, Pomona, and Ralston Valley High Schools have demonstrated tremendous resilience, hard work, and fortitude through a challenging period of physical distancing. Furthermore, the Arvada community has long supported students and educational institutions throughout its history. Therefore, the purpose of this proclamation is to recognize and applaud the efforts of Arvada's high school graduates to persevere during an extremely challenging time. So as such, whereas the month of May is traditionally the month when high school graduations occur across the nation in Colorado and in Arvada, and whereas the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic resulted in the Jefferson County Public School District converting to an online learning environment in March of 2020, and whereas the COVID pandemic resulted in graduation ceremonies being postponed to August 2020, and whereas the graduating classes of 2020 for Arvada, Arvada West, Pomona, and Ralston Valley High Schools have demonstrated tremendous resilience, hard work, and fortitude despite this challenge, and whereas Arvada's schools and students are the pride of our community and commitment to academic achievement is a cornerstone of the city's cultural heritage and now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Arvada, Colorado that May 4th, 2020 be designated as Arvada Graduates Class of 2020 Day dated this fourth day of May 2020 and virtually signed by all members of the City Council. And boy, it is tough to, yeah, let's give them a... Yeah, it's graduation for all of us was a very special time, and it's sad that these these students are not getting that experience this go around. They'll get to have it a little bit later on, but please, if you've got graduates in your homes, pass on our congratulations. You know, a lot of proms were missed, a lot of other activities were missed, so this is, I think, a good way to recognize our most recent graduates. Next, we have a presentation, and I see that Preston Gibson has joined us from Excel Energy. Mr. Gibson, good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Great to see you this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you and talk a little bit about what we're doing to build a clean energy future for the company. You know, I wanted to begin with just a few comments regarding Excel Energy and what we're doing relative to the coronavirus. You know, as a company, we're part of the community. We have over 3,600 employees throughout Colorado, and we want to be a responsible member of the community. And as such, when the governor created his COVID Relief Fund, we immediately contributed to that. We also recently contributed to our eight-state region of another $1.5 million, and we have much more that we're planning to do. In Colorado alone, we contributed over 90,000 surgical masks to, in support of our first responders in our hospitals and so on. And it's just really important for us to be active at this time. And also, I'd say this, safety is top priority for our company. And whether it's for our individuals that work for us, or the community, or our customers, or anyone, safety is top priority. So we practice social distancing, we've changed our protocols, we're wearing masks. Many of us are working from home. I've been working from home for eight weeks now, I think. It's become the new norm, I think. But at any rate, we're very supportive of our community, and we appreciate what you do, too. We appreciate you're getting us on this agenda because we know you've got a lot to do. So let me move forward with the presentation, and Bruce, if you could go to the next slide, please, that would be great. Just quickly, I've got about a 20-minute presentation. If that works, we've got, we'll hopefully have some time for some questions. If you want to ask questions throughout, just go right ahead. But just a quick primer on Excel. We're a company, we're based in Minneapolis. In Colorado, we're still known as Public Service Company of Colorado. We've got 3.6 million electricity customers, 2 million natural gas customers. In Colorado, we've got three-quarters of the entire company's natural gas customers and about a million and a half of electricity customers. We're recognized nationally for for wind energy. In fact, we've been the national leader in wind energy since 2005, if you can believe that. 15 years we've been the national leader in that. A lot of energy efficiency programs, we're a leader in that as well. And in terms of innovative technology, we've got a number of projects, a number of pilot projects that we have currently underway. So Bruce, next slide, please. Our priorities, and again, I would say at the very top of this priority list, it's not actually listed, is safety. Number one is safety. If we can't do everything safely, then none of these other priorities work for us. But our key priorities are leading the clean energy transition, enhancing the customer experience, and keeping bills low. Keeping bills low is very important. You know, as we, as we move towards this clean energy future, we want to do it in the right way, and we have been doing it in the right way to keep our bills lower than the national average. And I have some stats on that a little further down. So next slide, please, Bruce. So in terms of leading the clean energy transition, it's interesting that we, just since 2005, we've reduced our carbon emissions by 44%. That's pretty phenomenal reduction. We're leading the country in that as a company. And just in the 2018 to 2019 timeframe, we reduced our carbon emissions by 10%. That was the largest reduction that we'd ever, ever seen as a company. Our goals are 80% by 2030. We're well along the way to get there. We know we're going to be able to. And then by 2050, our vision is to get to 100% carbon-free generation of electricity. It's going to take some, probably some research, some new technologies and so on for us to get there, but that's clearly where we're planning to go as a company. And when we made the announcement a little over a year ago that we were going to do that, we were the first company in the country to indicate we'd be carbon-free by 2050. Then others, of course, followed, and we have a number of others that are proposing to do the same thing. So next slide. So our goals are, as it says, grounded in science. We've had our emissions and our programs modeled by researchers at DU, and they indicate that we clearly are meeting and very much exceeding the goals of the Paris Agreement and other agreements as well, other standards as well. You can see that, if you look at the left column, 100% reduction is where we plan to be at the end of 2050. Our line is that solid red, it turns into a dash line, but anything even in that gray area is likely to meet the Paris temperature target. So you can see, just for example, if you go to 2030, we're going to be 80% reduction. And then if you look a little up there, you could, even with about a 30% or so reduction, by 2030, we're likely to be able to be on the road to meeting those kinds of goals. So we're well ahead of the Paris Agreements. So next slide, please. Progress to date, again, I think I mentioned 44% carbon reduction in 2019. Just since 2005, we've reduced it that much. And with the US commitment under the Paris Climate Agreement called for a 26% to 28% reduction by 2025, and then the EPA's original Clean Power Plan called for a 32% reduction by 2030. We've obviously already well exceeded those. So next slide. Bruce, next slide, please. Thank you. Achieving our clean energy vision, protect energy reliability and affordability. You can see those. I won't read through all of those, but clearly, that's where we're planning to go. Reducing emissions is our top environmental priority, and we're interested in technologies that deliver the greatest carbon reductions at the lowest cost. I want to emphasize that again, because what we do is we're trying to find the lowest-cost alternatives to get to a carbon-free future. That way, we can keep our bills reasonable and low as a company. So next slide, please. Path to 80% by 2030, increase renewables, natural gas, energy storage, preserve nuclear. We're not going to have any nuclear here. Some of these slides work more for our entire company, obviously, but we're not planning nuclear here. But transition the coal fleet. I've got a slide on that coming up that shows how dramatically we've transitioned that fleet here in Colorado just over the last 10 years or so. It's pretty phenomenal. Strategic electrification, when we're looking at opportunities for electric vehicle electrification, energy efficiency, obviously, that is critical. Strategic electrification in terms of using more electricity, less natural gas, when there's opportunities to do that. So that's sort of the path that we're looking at to get to 80% by 2030. So next slide, please. So plans that support the 2030 goal in Colorado, the Colorado Energy Plan, and then upcoming Clean Energy Plan under SB 19236, that's, that was last year's legislation. Under the Colorado Energy Plan, we're adding 1,100 megawatts of wind. That's a phenomenal amount of wind. We created a wind farm out on the eastern plains last year, when it went into service early last year with 600 megawatts. We've got one under construction with another 500 megawatts. So we've got a phenomenal amount of energy. Just the, just the 600 megawatts was enough energy to power 325,000 households, to give you sort of an idea as to how much energy that actually is. It's a pretty phenomenal amount of energy. And also, under the Colorado Energy Plan, we're adding 700 megawatts of solar and 275 megawatts of battery storage. And one of the things I think is really instructive, too, is we are also closing two of our power generating units at Comanche. That's a coal-fired power plant down in Pueblo. So we're replacing that energy, that carbon-related energy, generated energy with renewable energy, and that helps us achieve that 2030 goal. So next slide, Bruce. So the path to 2050 aspiration, and this is where we're going to actually need some help. We're going to need, you know, there's some kid right now in junior high school who's developing some technology or will develop technology 10 years from now that's going to get us there. We don't know exactly what it's going to be. We've talked a lot about battery storage. Battery storage is not going to do it. We need other technologies. We're going to need to create hydrogen. That lower right graphic shows creating hydrogen with renewable sources, then storing that and using that when we need additional energy. Advanced modular nuclear. Don't know if it's going to happen here, but that's something certainly we're looking at. Deep rock geothermal. You see all of them on the left side. We clearly need to sort of an all-in approach, looking at all the different technologies and probably technologies that we don't even know about today that are going to eventually get us to 2050 and to really clean energy future. Next slide, please. So what do we need? We need supportive innovation policies, our D and D, renewable research and development, and we need incentives potentially. So we need the ecosystem, we need streamlined permitting, we need processes that can help us move quickly in that direction of a carbon-free future. Maybe we need standards if necessary for long-term carbon emissions reductions. But clearly, there are a lot of things we need. It's sort of an entire ecosystem that is going to help us get to that, to that final goal of being carbon-free as a company. All right, next slide. We're looking at next year, having a project at one of our two nuclear plants in the upper Midwest for hydrogen demonstration. Again, that's how we create this renewable hydrogen that we can use for powering our electricity generation. We think that it's a great opportunity for the future, and we're going to have a demonstration project, and it'll reduce emissions from our gas system. So next slide. So reducing emissions, well, you know, I remember, and I've been working for the company for only nine years now, but I remember when I was working for the, when I began working for the company, we're talking about the transition from coal to natural gas, and that was the bridge fuel. Probably many of you remember that. And now, just a mere nine years later, even just a few years later, all of a sudden, as we're getting closer and closer to our goals and reaching a carbon-free electric generation, natural gas is something that people are saying, wait a minute, we don't want you to use natural gas now. That's the new bad fuel, right? Because it's carbon, it's carbon-based fuel. So what are we going to do? Well, it's, if you look, it's going to be producers and suppliers doing what they can to contain natural, natural gas and to not do anything that would cause the natural gas to be emitted into the atmosphere. We do need to do the same thing as a company in terms of improving our pipelines, meeting various standards and challenges and so on, and our customers need to increase conservation. So there's a number of things that we can do. Bottom line, natural gas seems to be the next place, the next target for where we actually need to start seriously looking at what we can do to make our system more efficient and better. So next slide. Beneficial electrification, this is something that I mentioned a little bit earlier. Electric vehicles, we've got about, I remember last year, somebody saying, I think it was Tim Jackson over, over at Automobile Association, he said that we have about 25,000 electric vehicles on the road currently. Our governor wants close to a million of them on the road in the next 10 years. Well, some legislation was passed last year to enable us to get more active and in developing, helping develop that infrastructure to get us there, to get us to a million electric vehicles in the next 10 years. So we have a, we're currently working on a transportation electrification plan, and we're going to submit that to the, to the Public Utilities Commission for review, hopefully later this month. It'll have fleet charging, public charging, infrastructure for homes, infrastructure for various locations and so on. And I can tell you, this is something that's a big focus of our company to help our state get there to a million, a million vehicles. But there's other things, too. As I mentioned, really reduce upstream line of gas emissions and so on and so forth. All right, next slide. Okay, driving electric is clean today, cleaner in the future. Obviously, it's cleaner in the future because as we produce electricity with more renewables, it's going to be cleaner in the future. And by the time you get to see, you get down to 2030, EV charging, Excel Energy Colorado system, little bit of emissions because we're not going to be completely renewable, but we are going to be carbon-free. So next slide. Evolving energy mix, I think we all know where we've been heading as a company. This shows our entire company, including all of our eight-state region. That's why you see nuclear into it in this particular slide. But go to the next one, please. So here's Colorado. So I think it's interesting that just in 2005, and for me, that just seems like yesterday, that's not very long ago, we had almost two-thirds of our energy generated by coal. Now we're to the point where, you know, by 2027, which is coming up soon, we're going to have about 57% generated by renewables, only 23% by coal. We've already cut our coal generation in half just since 2005. So that's where we're headed as a company. You can see, natural gas is 36%, but that's going to be coming down as well. We need that for base generation when, you know, when the sun's not shining and the wind's not blowing. We all, we all know when that happens, and we clearly need some generation that can kick in when we don't have renewables available. All right, next slide. If you look at this, this is the coal plant retirements, and I've only got just a couple more slides here, but if you take a look in that left, that left graphic, you can see all the various power plants that have been retired through 2018 and 2005. Many of those are here in Colorado. You look at Cameos, it was here, Cherokee 1, Cherokee 2, Cherokee 3, Arapaho, Cherokee 4, Valmont. All those Cherokees was our plant in North Denver, at about 60th and came with the cross street. But at any rate, in North Denver, you used to see the smoke stacks and was mostly just, for the most part, it was a lot of steam and so on. But there were a lot of emissions also coming at that. Now that's about 80% to 90% cleaner today than it was just a few years ago when we started retiring those plants. Then you look at the middle column, you can see Comanche 1 and Comanche 2. Those are the ones down in Pueblo. We're going to be retiring those. That's going to help us get to the 80%. So next slide, please. Steel for fuel. We just simply have this phrase. I'm not sure whether other utilities use it or not, but clearly, steel, meaning a steel tower, the wind, the turbines and so on, the turbines are our fuel. It used to be that we used a lot of coal as a fuel. Now we're using steel for fuel, just kind of a way that we, we look at it. But 70% increase in our wind portfolio and five times the own, the own wind capacity compared to 2016. We're moving very quickly towards a lot of steel, a lot of wind for fuel. Next slide. We have a range of renewable choices, of course. You know, this is something that if a customer wants to move more quickly, we support distributed energy, you know, rooftop solar with our solar rewards programs. We have community solar, it's our Solar Gardens program. Wind Source has been around since, you know, the mid 1990s. It's, it's something that's been a very, very popular program. So next slide. Energy efficiency leadership, we clearly have been a leader in energy efficiency, about 150 programs and 21 avoided power plants just by saving, just by saving that energy. And this is throughout our entire company, not just Colorado, but throughout our entire country or company, it was eight-state region. We've avoided 21 power plants, and that's pretty, I think, pretty amazing. Next slide. Environmental benefits, as I mentioned earlier, as we move towards, from coal and towards a cleaner future, we've reduced emissions by those numbers company-wide, 47, 82, 80, 44%. And it's pretty phenomenal. Okay, next slide. Keeping customer bills low is very, very important to us, and we are lower than the national average on our bills. I don't have the exact numbers. We're significantly lower on our electricity bills as well as our natural gas bills. And I wanted to stop there and say also, a little bit unrelated to this, but I wanted to say that, you know, being part of our community, as I mentioned to begin with, is very, very important for our company. You know, we were very supportive of our communities with, with grants. In fact, last year, we had, our company had two, over $2 million in charitable donations, 3,800 volunteers, 400 nonprofits served, 30,000 volunteer hours. Just in Arvada, we support the Arvada Center. I've been to a couple of plays there recently. They're a lot of fun when we could actually do that fun kind of thing. I can't believe we can't do that anymore, but hopefully, one day, we'll be back. But we support their Arvada Center and many other organizations. Red Rocks Community College, we constantly support them every year with with some grant funding and so on. So with that, I want to close and just say thank you again, because, you know, I know you've got a lot to do, and I've just been kind of rambling about what I think is kind of exciting. A lot of people may not think it's so exciting, but I do, and I appreciate you listening to me. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Very good. Thank you, Preston. You did not take your full 20 minutes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody, Ms. Ford?
Well, I did want to thank Preston and thank Excel for their support of the Arvada Center. It's much appreciated. And I also wanted to ask you, Preston, you mentioned about future innovation. Is Excel supporting schools like the mines and places where there are great programs, you know, where this type of innovation would be found?
Yeah, you know, we do, we do support school mines. There's a number of things that we do. I'm not, not sure to the extent we've supported innovation there. Certainly, we've had a number of grants there. We do just about every year. I think there's a multicultural engineering program that we, we support every year at, at School of Mines. I've been to a number of their events. You know, we, we as a company are trying to get more involved in, in research and development. We had a bill, this legislative session called Innovative Clean Technology, and it was going to allow us to invest a certain amount of money in research and development and hopefully be able to offset that with, with some, basically, we'd be able to pay for that. And bottom line is that bill's got stymied with everything else. I mean, there's so many bills that are sitting there in the legislation that aren't going anywhere. So I don't know where we're going to do with that, but I can tell you that we're going to have to rely a lot on private industry. Private industry is going to have to do a lot of this work. And to the extent that we might see something that looks like a great promising technology, maybe we can invest in it.
Great. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Pfeiffer?
Preston, I just want to say thank you for your company who reinvests in our communities. I know you do a lot more broader than Arvada and Colorado and, and, you know, inside and outside of the city, I've worked with you and from the state level. And I know for a fact how much Excel reinvests in their network to provide a top-shelf product, and I appreciate your innovation and your, you know, focus on renewable energy. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate that much.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I also just wanted to echo the sentiments of my fellow council members. Thank you for everything that Excel is doing as well as right now, helping keep the lights on. I know there's probably been a significant increase in residential demand, so thank you for everything your team is doing to keep the lights on across Arvada and across Colorado. And then I just wanted to ask, just building upon Councilmember Ford's questions, and then seeing the DOE and the Idaho National Laboratory, can you compound upon maybe some of the things you guys do with NREL? Are you part of any of the Technology Accelerator programs that they host and whatnot? Just, I know about a little bit through my own personal work, and there's some exciting stuff being done there.
Yeah, we do. You know, I wish that I had, had the projects, you know, committed to memory. I don't, but we do a lot of research and analysis and partnerships with NREL, also National Center for Atmospheric Research in Boulder. So we do, we have a great partnership with our federal labs, and sometimes it's wind research, sometimes it's solar research, it's predictive research. But clearly, we have a great relationship, and it's been wonderful. It's great to have those labs here, right here in Colorado. But we, we do, bottom line, I can tell you right out, if you look up Highway 93, you know where the wind test site is for, for NREL. We're building a, it's like a substation, it's really like a switching yard to be able to allow that energy to go directly onto our system. And we're currently working on that in partnership with NREL right now, just as one example.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Very good, Preston. Thank, I see no one else has their hand raised. I'll, I'll close out this portion by echoing the comments that have been made in terms of the long-range work you all are doing, but also the short-range work. I think we've really improved the relationship as it pertains to street cuts and things of that nature. Very good cooperation going on between the city and Excel for when utilities have to be put into the street, things of that nature. And you've always been a real champion for us when we've had either a building project, either for the city itself or for one of our local businesses that have come up against a glitch and needed some extra help from Excel, and I've always been able to call you and appreciate that. So thank you personally.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate that. The only thing I need now is I need a, I need an Excel Energy backdrop like you guys have that city backdrop.
Pretty cool, huh? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good evening.
You, too.
Next, we'll move on to public comment, and we actually have, I've got three emails that we've received to be read into public comment, and I'll do those, and then we'll see if there's any other public comment. The first one is from Kelly Ergle, 5620 Allison Street. Your city council, one size does not fit all. Arvada has a diverse makeup of households. We have families of five, we have households of one. We have homes who do not recycle and have lots of trash. We have homes that primarily recycle and have nearly no trash. We have very large homes with large garage space for large trash cans. We have small homes with no garages with limited space for trash cans. We have homes with driveways to access the street. We have homes with only alley access. We have people who clean constantly and have lots to throw away in need of rollaways, and we have people who do not. How do you find one company and one How do you find one company and one service that can meet all those needs? While I greatly appreciate the desire to protect our streets from the weight of multiple trash trucks, I also appreciate the ability for consumers to identify their own service based on their need. A single provider system forces each resident of Arvada to flex their needs to the single choice made by the city. In a city that prides itself on hearing the voice of the resident, any decision must honor the many needs and perspectives of those residents. The next one is from Pam Borup. Loesch, dear mayor and city council members, I'm writing to you to express my concern regarding the proposed organized waste hauling ordinance. This is a service I feel that is totally unnecessary for the city to provide at this time. While I appreciate that the ordinance has an opt out option, given the economic and social crisis we are currently experiencing, I feel that any city resources and effort should be used to address the pandemic and recovery, concentrating on what services the city provides and helping the community recover. Anyone who is paying attention to our community knows how divisive this issue is to begin with. I feel that the council has an opportunity to table the ordinance and should focus on finding ways to unite the community. And that individual resides 7642 Parfa Street in Arvada. And then the third one was a letter that was received by Kristen Rush today as our city clerk. And this is from Waste Management. Dear mail, mayor and counselors, I'm requesting you read this into the record for tonight's May 4th City of Arvada Council meeting. Waste Management requests you withhold any action on that council bill 20-11 until after the public hearing in June for a few significant reasons. And three bullet points, the bids submitted are now over a year old and a more competitive price could easily be achieved, saving citizens' money in these uncertain times by requesting an updated price for the same bid. Second bullet point, if the City of Arvada does decide to move forward with the current bid, all haulers, including Waste Management, need time to both notice customers and remove containers. Third bullet point, the impact of a decision on residential service, which is essential to everyone's daily lives, should have adequate public comment and debate. Many people are very connected to their trash haulers. And while everyone, all caps, is focused on the COVID pandemic, we should take the time needed to have a thorough discussion. I appreciate your attention to this matter and continued efforts in your community sincerely. L.A. Reynolds, Public Sector Solutions Manager for Waste Management. Those are the three that we've received specifically pertaining to tonight's meeting. We have received, all of us have received emails pro and con on this issue. And to be made part of the record, please submit them to the city clerk so that they can be included as part of our record. And certainly, we'll be taking public comment when this matter comes before us for for further action. Kristen Rush or Bruce, do we have any other individuals signed up to speak tonight?
No, we don't have anything else.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to new business. We have a resolution, 20-34, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Adams County, Colorado and the City of Arvada regarding dispersment of Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act funds. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As as you well know, we are certainly in in a world pandemic, a public health emergency. On March 27th, the United States Congress passed the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act, which authorized the allocation over $2 trillion in economic relief funds for families and small businesses and state and local governments. The president signed the legislation into law that same day. The allocation of CARES Act funds resulted in over $2.2 billion allocated to the state of Colorado. And the provisions within that legislation allow the state to retain 55% of the allocation, ordinarily about 1.7 billion and 45% to to local governments with populations over 500,000. There are only five local governments in Colorado that were able, that qualified based on their population to receive part of that allocation. And those included Adams and Jefferson Counties. And tonight, what is before you is the allocation of to Jefferson County, I'm sorry, to Adams County, which received about 9.3 billion. The leadership in Jefferson County determined that it would be best to divide that allocation up between the municipalities within Adams County. And there is a portion of Arvada with a little over 3,000 residents that is within Adams County. And the actions of the county manager and the elected county commissioners in Adams County resulted in a allocation to the City of Arvada of $242,993 based on a, the per capita allocation formula. And before you is this intergovernmental agreement, which if approved tonight, would result in the allocation of that amount of money to the City of Arvada. We anticipate, in fact, today learned that the county, Board of County Commissioners in Jefferson County approved a similar allocation formula, which will be bringing to you a similar intergovernmental agreement. But tonight is the one focused on Adams County. We're working on a distribution plan that would support the business community, nonprofit organizations, and also address any direct city costs. And this intergovernmental agreement has been reviewed very closely by our city attorney. And I'll ask Rachel to make a few comments regarding this agreement.
Good evening, council. Just to highlight for you a few provisions of this particular agreement. The agreement provides for the city receiving its allocated share of funding from Adams County in three equal dispersments. The city would need to invoice Adams County before receiving a dispersment and would have to show that it had spent the funds from the prior dispersment before receiving the next one. The city generally is agreeing to, as part of this IGA, if approved, would be agreeing to submit monthly reports to the county related to the amounts that had been spent by the city and what those amounts were used for. The city would also be agreeing as part of the IGA to be responsible for following all requirements of the CARES Act in terms of how those funds are spent and being responsible, assuming the the federal government seeks some sort of reimbursement as a result of that. So those are the highlights in terms of the requirements.
Very good. Open it up for council question or action. Somebody raise their hand. Mr. Piper?
If there's any questions, it doesn't seem like there is. I'll go ahead and make the motion.
You may proceed.
All right, I move that Resolution 20-034, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Adams County, Colorado and the City of Arvada regarding the dispersment of Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act Fund be approved.
Questions for approval, Mayor Pro Tim Dot Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we move on to first readings. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 20-011, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 90, Solid Waste of the Arvada City Code, be approved on first reading, order published in full and public hearing to be set for June 15th, 2020 at 6:15 p.m.
Okay, Mr. Marriott?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, council. I will be voting no on this first reading, something very unusual. I've never seen it done in my time on council. But I feel compelled to do it today for a couple of very good reasons. The first is we are in very unusual times with this coronavirus, the economic impacts of which we have yet to even begin to know. And I'm speaking about the economic impacts, both on the city as well as on all the residents of the city. This proposal will impose a fee on each and every resident in the city, whether you participate in the program or not, and whether you're in an HOA or not. This will impose a fee on everyone. And given the current economic climate with regards to individuals in the city, I see this as a, as the complete wrong time to be taking this up. The second is that, speaking of the economics, this proposal also requires a very large multimillion dollar investment by the city in infrastructure, in buying trash bins for everybody. And again, just like before, we are in such very unusual times with this coronavirus that we do not yet know what the impacts to the city economically are going to be. We do know that in the very, very, very short run, the half a month of March, we know that the impacts to the city have been minimal. But we also know that it will not be that way going forward. And we are just completely guessing on what that impact may be and also how long that impact may last. And rather than expending millions of city dollars on this program now, we may very well be wishing we had those city dollars available to us for much more pressing needs, given the time we're in. And the last reason I will be voting no is this issue is obviously a very passionate issue for a number of our residents. We heard public comment about it tonight and requires a process by which the public is freely able to participate. Currently, we are holding a very unusual city council meeting, maybe only the third one we've ever done like this, where we are all doing it virtually or electronically. There are many members of our community who may very well like to make public comments or look us in the face as we make these changes on them, who have no ability to do this electronically like we are doing it, who also may find that just sending an email in would be insufficient. And until we both are able to have meetings where folks can come in person and more importantly, have meetings in an environment where people feel safe coming in person, I really do not wish to to put anyone in it, in the environment where someone, whether it be the governor or the health department director, has said it's safe to go to meetings in in person, but they feel uncomfortable going to meetings in person. And they have to make a very difficult choice of not fully interacting with their local government or feeling like they put themselves at risk. And so for all those reasons, I'm going to vote vote no. And I encourage the rest of council to vote no as well. Let's put this up at a time where all of these issues are solved. There appears to be, to be nothing about this that requires that it be done now. And so that's why I will be voting no.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for those thoughts, Councilmember Marriott. I appreciate them. And none of us want to put anyone in harm's way in any way, shape or form. And, you know, should we open to the public? I know in my heart of hearts that our city will do everything to make sure that anybody that comes within 10 feet of us is is whatever we can do to to be as safe as we can. And it is our sincere hope that we are open in June for an in-person meeting. Health professionals that I have spoken to and we, whether we've seen them on TV or or they're in our associations or, you know, they're our neighbors, have all said that this coronavirus could come back in full force in the fall and the winter with a vengeance worse than we're seeing now. And we could very well be rendered back into stay at home, hopefully not. But I have to put it out there as as something that very would, very well could happen. Now, if we put off more important business and and push it further down the road, leaving that slim opportunity of this summer, that could very well be the slim opportunity that we have to meet in person. I I just think that we need to make sure that we're not going to stop conducting business as a government because we can't meet fully in person. I know that that people can get on a video call like this. And if we can't, we'll we'll figure out a way if we have to send a camera team to their home. Sorry, Mr. Devon, if I just gave everybody KTV a heart attack about that one. But there, you know, we will offer up several options for people to get in front of us face to face. We have been meeting like this. I know it's only a third business meeting, but we've been meeting like this as a council. Most people have been meeting like this for their jobs. This could very well be part of the new normal. I just want to throw that out there.
Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm, number one, thank you for taking these first readings and the format in which you're taking them so that we could have a discussion about this. I just want to go back for just a minute to August 26th, where this particular issue came to council for a vote specific to putting certain language on the ballot for November of last year. And as I said then, I was fully prepared in that meeting to to vote yes, to put this, to put some sort of specific language on the ballot. But as we heard public comment then during that particular hearing, it was evident that there wasn't enough information. And those that were providing public comment were very passionate about the fact that there wasn't enough information and that we shouldn't put this question on the ballot. And so I think we made the right decision, which was to pull it or to to vote no on the decision to have this question on the ballot in November. It was my full expectation that we were going to put additional information out so that people could give us their feedback and could understand what it meant to them to have a single hauler or whatever it is that we're calling it right now. And it felt like we went fast forward into this, oh, great, now council's got it and they're going to make the decision. And we need to fast track this thing and and do whatever's possible to get the information out so that people know. Well, quite honestly, since the information's been put out, I have received probably the same emails that others have received, some obviously in support, but way more than I was getting before in those who were opposed to it for a lot of the reasons that Mr. Marriott spoke to around the economic hardship and that this was going to impose on their families, not necessarily because of COVID, but just the simple fact that based on what they read and the information that had been published, this was going to cost them more and going to be an impact to their families. And so again, I I just question the fact that we're we're doing this now. I go back to our first Zoom council meeting when I said we should really be focusing on those things that are most important right now. This does not rise to a level of importance in my mind that we should be taking this up in a first reading tonight and putting it on the agenda for a vote in June. It seems reckless and it it seems like it will. It it just, we, there's work to be done. And I think our citizens, to Mr. Marriott's point, have a right to come in whatever form or fashion that might be. We've got a, we've got a workshop, I think, planned. We've got some open houses planned. But how in the world are those open houses even going to work prior to the June? What was the timing? June 15th. And so again, I think that this is reckless on our part to even consider a first reading tonight on this. And I will not be voting for this tonight. I I think that this needs to be pushed well out into the future. And to Ms. Miller's point on sickness and and what's going to happen in the fall. I'm not a doctor. I I don't know and understand all that. I've heard the same kinds of things. All the more reason why I don't think the election's going to be canceled in November. All the more reason why this needs to be pushed to the public for them to give us their input and feedback as to why or why not Arvada should have a single hauler. So again, I I think that we're being reckless as a council, keeping this on the agenda or pushing this forward with the first reading for a hearing in June.
Mr. Piper?
Yeah, well, too bad we didn't have a conversation the last three months when we have been having those conversations, Mr. Jones. I'll tell Mr. Marriott, it's the only one who's brought up some of those concerns. But first, I'm never hearing it from you. So that's new news coming from you right now that you want to now stop it, even though you didn't say anything the last two months. Also, I want to add, we've been talking about this for 18 plus months. This is not new news. And and we have to get to a point where we need to either put an end to this or solve it. And you have to remember, the reason we went down this path was because our citizen survey overwhelmingly, for what, a dozen years, have said they want this to happen. We are taking the action. We're moving forward. We got the information. The other reason why I can't go to a vote, it's too late now. The other reason why it can't go to a vote, it's too late now, but it disclosed this huge document of trade, trade information of an NDA to a, a bidder. Whole reason why we couldn't take it to a vote was because this information cannot be shared in that format on a November vote. It can only be shared in this type of arena. This is giving our citizens full information that they would not get in a November election. So I, I see it a lot different than you do. I'm happy, I'm excited that this massive deck that gives all the transparency to what the hard work of our, our VADA team put together to find the best thing for our citizens is remarkable, and I'm, I'm excited and happy that they did the due diligence, and now we're sharing it all the way down to the penny. That could not be shared in a November election, remember that. Um, this is more transparency than, than going that route. So, uh, looking at the prices, paying less than what I pay, it's already automatically $2 cheaper for what I'm paying. So I've talked to my grandparents out in Lake Harbor, automatically cheaper. In fact, it's gonna be a lot cheaper, they don't need the bigger cans. Um, this is great, we gotta move forward. I don't want fear, again, this is what I'm gonna use, fear to lead our decisions. If I was to use yours and Mr. Marriott's excuse of health, then I need to stop all the other ones that are gonna come in front of us, and business needs to completely go to its knees here in the city. It's not gonna happen. We got the Grandview review, uh, uh, development, we've got all these other developments that have to be looked at. We can all get scared and go underneath our rock, or we need to move forward. This is a move forward move. I'm completely supportive of this moving forward to, for a public hearing.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I appreciate the comments, uh, that have been said tonight. I too am very excited about this program and absolutely wanna see this go forward. I appreciate Mr. Marriott, uh, Marriott's comments. I would like to just say that while he mentioned an extra fee that will, uh, be put on citizens, with that fee come extra services, three extra services in fact, two pickups, spring and fall, and a bulky item pickup, which we don't currently have in our city. He also mentioned about COVID, we have waste regardless of whether we have a pandemic or not, and people are gonna need to dispose of their waste, and this program does give good prices. In fact, I was notified by one of the homeowner, uh, associations in my district, they're very excited about this program, they have a contract that's coming up in July, and they would like to get onto this program. So for that reason alone, I would not like to see it, uh, delayed, and I'm sure that there're gonna be a lot more HOAs in addition to consumers that I have talked to in my district that also feel that this is a great program and will provide, uh, less service, uh, less, uh, expense to this service. I agree with Mr. Pfeifer that we have looked at this situation over the last year, not only have our employees put a lot of time and effort into this, which is money, um, we've also put out a very valid and fair, uh, bid proposal. I'm a little disappointed to hear from Waste Management, being that they were one of the ones who, uh, were a part of that proposal, and I think that's a poor play on their part by writing that letter to say that prices could be cheaper. This is a very fair process that's been done. We also have our, uh, Citizen Advisory Committee, the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, that has worked hours. I have never seen a committee work so hard on this process because of the, uh, response that we got on our surveys. And finally, I'm gonna say this, I believe that leadership has to take an active role in making good decisions for its citizens. This is a decision that's going to affect us now and into the future. As a city, we need to look forward when it comes to the environment. We just heard a very interesting presentation from a large corporation that is working, uh, very hard on getting their carbon emissions down, and I really appreciate people's talking about choice and their constitutional rights, but I'm also gonna say that I wanna hear people saying, yes, we have constitutional rights, but what about our responsibility as citizens of this wonderful country? So I will be voting yes to move this forward, and I'm thankful that we do have excellent technology, that people can give their opinions, and I appreciate constituents giving their opinions. So I will be voting yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I wanna thank all of my fellow council members for all of their words on both sides. I think everybody makes excellent points, which is one of the most interesting things that, as the newest member of council who was elected in that November election that Councilmember Jones was referencing, i- it comes very interesting to me as a person because I was not a part of those earlier conversations, this 18 months Councilmember Pfeifer is recommending, so I'm coming into this a little more fresh, and I'm hearing the both sides that make really excellent arguments. And that was, so I would say more challenging about this one because neither side is, is clearly right or wrong, and both sides makes valid points, and so I wanna commend everyone for having this respectful and passionate debate, um, and for all of the constituents who've reached out to me in my district, I would say it's been about 50/50 in terms of for or against, or in terms of a lot of the against, it's actually, I'm for it, but I'm not for this provision. Can we make this better? Can we consider this one thing? And if so, I think it would be fantastic, which is why we're in the first reading process right now. This has been a very long process that the city has been doing. I agree with my council members that business should not just stop because, uh, because of the pandemic. We, we took a couple of weeks to find our footing, now business is resuming quite, um, readily in terms of virtual town meetings, we're hoping to have a hybrid meeting by June, and things do remain in flux. If, God forbid, the numbers spike again, I know our city leadership will take the precautions necessary to protect our citizens and adjust as necessary. So this is not 100% set in stone, it's the likely path that we're going to see, and that's what we're voting on. And so I will vote yes, simply because this has been a long time coming. This is, this is something that, as somebody who's on the campaign trail, I talked about it almost every single door, and residents had all heard about it, this was not fresh news for them. And so I think for my district, I have a good sense of where they are from between the campaign and what I'm hearing now, and encourage all residents, um, to reach out to us continually. That's why we're not voting tonight. We have to remember and assure people, this is not a vote, this is a first reading so that we can continue collecting information and then make the best decision possible for our residents.
Ms. Jones?
Um, thank you. Just a couple of other points. I, you know, again, I wanna make sure that, you know, we're all, um, you know, healthy debate, and we've always been good at healthy debate.
And with that, Mr. Jones, I must take exception to you calling your fellow council members reckless. That bothers me, okay?
Okay. I'm finished.
Now, go ahead and finish your comments. Okay? You know, I just, we get along well as a group, and I think there's some fighting words that get said that really don't need to be said, and that's, that, that would be my only comment on that. I, you know, this is such a divisive issue. It was a divisive issue back in 2011. Uh, I, I'm not keen about divisive issues coming up at this time when we've got other clearly divisive issues ahead of us, but the bottom line is, this has been in the works, it's been in the discussions. Uh, frankly, I think having the public hearing and hearing what our citizens have to say is gonna be very, very important, and so I don't want to forestall that public input, and it may convince some people to go a different direction than what they wanna, what they think they wanna go right now. I don't know, but, um, I will be supporting this, this just first reading. Um, it's very unusual. I think I remember one other time where we actually had a split vote on a first reading in the last 20 years, but, um, uh, you know, I, I, I don't think we can shy away from moving forward with the public hearing, and we may decide at that public hearing that we need more information, or that there are other factors that have come up in the meantime that will push this out beyond, matters beyond our control at this time. But, um, I think we have to go ahead and move forward with the schedule for the June, so, uh, let's do a vote on this. Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Marriott?
No.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, passes five to two, thank you. Ms. Miller, if you wanna do the other two first readings?
I move the Council Bill 20-012 in ordinance repealing the Arvada Land Development Code 2008 Part III of the Code of the City of Arvada, Colorado, City Code, adopting a new Arvada Land Development Code 2020 as part of, as part three of the City Code, adopting the City of Arvada zoning map excluding west of Alkire Street and north of West 80th Avenue, dated June 1st, 2020, adopting a rezoning comparative table, adopting penalty provisions for violations of the 2020 Land Development Code, and amending certain sections of Part II of the City Code affected by the adoption of the 2020 Land Development Code and Council Bill 20013 in ordinance repealing or reenact, reenacting Section 74-31, land use fees of Article II, Community Development Department Service Fees, Chapter 74, Planning and Development of the City of Arvada Code. Both be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearing be set for May 18th, 2020 at 6:15 PM.
Motions for approval on first reading, Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, that passes seven to zero. Next, we'll move on to, uh, public hearings. We have two public hearings for tonight. First one is Council Bill 20002, an ordinance amending Section 78-292, 78-295, 78-298, and 78-299 of Article 5, Rights of Way of Chapter 78, Public Improvements of the Arvada City Code. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, the ordinance before you would essentially establish, um, the, uh, uh, an escrow requirement for public right-of-way improvements in association with, uh, development, uh, projects. And what we're asking for is for the, uh, the, uh, public improvements to be, uh, extended, neither the actual cost or letter of credit, uh, to be the, uh, uh, the value of the public improvements. This will, this will enable us to have a, a cleaner process for holding, uh, the development community accountable for completing the public improvements. Uh, there have been times where these public improvements have not been, uh, completed, uh, in a timely manner in association with development projects, uh, during, in our, in our, uh, with our lower fees, uh, uh, the current fees are for developments that are less than five acres, uh, the escrow is $50,000, and for developments that's greater than five acres, it's $100,000. In most ca, well, virtually all cases, that falls quite a bit short of the amount of, of the value, the actual value of the, of the public improvements. And so we have situations where, um, sometimes we are, um, holding up, uh, inspections, uh, to make sure the public improvements are completed, uh, sometimes they're not completed, uh, we end up issuing temporary certificates of occupancy, uh, and what this, um, uh, ordinance proposes to do is give us more leverage in getting those very important public improvements completed, uh, in a timely manner so that we can allow for the, um, inspections to occur and for the sign-off to occur for these, uh, developments, uh, to be basically completed. Um, so, uh, as part of that process, we looked at what other cities are doing, um, and, uh, they, uh, are completing, uh, they have ordinances that are very similar to what is before you tonight, and we are recommending approval.
Very good. Is there any public comment?
There is not.
And understanding there is no public comment, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council question or action. Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment in support of this. I, I've, uh, you know, had some experience around this topic, and, uh, I think that the approach is both fair for the developer as well as the city and, uh, the, maybe the landowner at the time, or whoever might be the property owner, but, uh, I, I think this approach is, uh, a very good approach, and, and I'm gonna definitely be supporting it. I think it will make it a lot easier on everybody who needs to transact, uh, with the city and, and holding the developer accountable, but not also, because there's also the opposite I don't think Mr. Devon has brought up, is I believe that your five acre, $50,000 can occur for even people that might only need a couple thousand. And so, um, I've seen, uh, you know, if you look at a couple houses being developed and the sidewalk needs to be repaired, holding a couple thousand dollars to make sure those sidewalks get repaired, it actually benefits, uh, the developer versus holding them at a $50,000 escrow. So, uh, I think that is a win-win, and, and I'll be supporting it.
Good. I see no other, uh, hands raised. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, since I said I support, I'll go ahead and, uh, do the, uh, motion. I move that council, oops, sorry, I got the wrong council bills. Give me one, two seconds, there I go. I, I move that Council Bill 20-002, an ordinance amending Section 78-292, 78-295, 78-298, and 78-299 of Article 5, Rights of Way of Chapter 78, Public Improvement of the Arvada City Code be approved from final reading number 4725 and order published by title only.
Motions for approval, uh, Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, that passes seven to zero. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 20-10, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the City of Blackhawk for the use of augmentation station. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this intergovernmental agreement, uh, basically allows for the City of Arvada and the City of Blackhawk to, uh, share and, and access each, each entity's, uh, augmentation stations in association with the, uh, Clear Creek, Clear Creek water rights, um, and, um, the, uh, need to account for those water rights and to measure how much water is being used and diverted and all those kinds of things. Uh, so, uh, rather than, than actually, uh, put in the, uh, yeah, put in the actual augmentation stations that are necessary, uh, the two cities have agreed to share the augmentation stations, um, at a significant, uh, uh, reduction in cost compared to actually constructing the augmentation stations, uh, for each, um, each organization's or each entity's, uh, water users, um, and also demonstrates, uh, a, a good, uh, a good win-win, a good ability for each city to, uh, benefit, uh, from the other's resources, uh, saving a lot of money and getting a, a, an actual, uh, uh, control and measurement of, uh, the Clear Creek Basin and the water rights associated with that. Uh, so for those reasons, uh, we are recommending approval of this ordinance.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address counsel on this matter? My understanding there is not. Uh, Ms. Simpson, you have a question?
Uh, no, I just wanted to commend the city. This is absolutely fantastic, this city-to-city, uh, resource sharing, it makes sense for us, it makes sense for the City of Blackhawk, so wanted to say thank you to staff for finding resources like this, and if there's no other questions, I will make the motion.
Actually, uh, Ms. Ford's, uh, reserved the motion, so.
Oh, go for it.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I'd like to, before I make the motion, and I agree with, uh, Ms. Simpson, this is, uh, one of those, uh, agreements that work out beautifully for both cities. But before I make the motion, I'd like to just disclose that my husband is the water manager for Blackhawk, the City of Blackhawk. Uh, neither he or I will benefit from this personally, so I am gonna go ahead and make this a motion. I move that CB 20-010, an ord- I move that CB 20 dash 010, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and the City of our, uh, City of Blackhawk for the use of augmentation stations be approved on final reading numbered 4727 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval. Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That passes seven to zero. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. We now have a section for public comment. Do we have anyone, uh, signed up for public comment or wishing to speak at this time under public comment?
We do not.
Very good. I'll turn it over then to reports from city councils. Any city committee reports, council reports? Yes, Mr. Pfeifer?
Um, I just wanted to give a quick update. We are still meeting with the RTD Reimagine, or Reimagine RTD, one of those. We are meeting virtually. Uh, as you know, Mr. Mayor, uh, it's RTD's, uh, attempt to reimagine themselves into a new world of ridership and efficiencies of their system. The meeting is still progressing. Uh, they're still pulling things together. Not much to report, but it is moving forward. They're still trying to keep it on track. The two-year adventure.
Anything else? Okay, we have the appointments to the Old Town Business Improvement District. Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I move to appoint Jamie Hollier and Casey Adler to the Old Town Business Improvement District for three-year terms ending April 30th, 2023.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. That passes seven to zero. Next we have the appointment to the Design Review Committee. Ms. Simpson?
Yes, apologies, I was hung up. Um, I move to appoint Peter Kazura to the Design Review Committee for a three-year term ending May 4th, 2023.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Pfeifer?
Aye.
Ms. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marriott?
Aye.
Ms. Simpson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye as well. That passes unanimously. Uh, that concludes reports from the city council. Uh, this format has a lot of advantages. What it does not have is an opportunity for me to get together with Mr. J- uh, Jones afterwards. I should not have interrupted you before you made your final comments. I apologize for that. Mr. Devon?
No reports from the city manager, Mr. Mayor and council?
Okay, city attorney?
No reports from me, Your Honor.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.